It is 6:30 on April 28th, 2021. This is the Ashland Planning Board meeting. Due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the governor issued emergency order 12 that waived the relocation requirement of public officials at a public meeting. This meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom, and the Zoom information was on the agenda that was posted also on the town website. First of all, roll call for the planning board. Andy Fitch?
Present.
Kathleen DeWolf?
Present.
Paula Hancock?
Present.
And I'm Mardean Badger, the chair of the planning board. And we also have with us Susan MacLeod, who is our land use assistant. The first item on the agenda is approval of three sets of minutes of March 24th, April 7th, and April 14th. If we want to do them one at a time or all together, I will accept a motion in any way, any format.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting, the minutes of March 24th, April 7th, and 1814 as presented.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments, corrections? Any changes? Okay.
Yeah, Mardean, as it is presented, I'm not going to be able to vote on these.
You were not at the, you were not on the board at the time, I know. Okay, so I'll just put you down as abstaining. Okay, roll call vote. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Paula Hancock?
Aye.
And Mardean Badger, aye. And Andy Fitch, abstain. Okay. And I have one other, oh, I thought I had someone to let in. Let me see. Okay, I'm going to move one thing up on the agenda, and that is the voluntary merger approval. Let me pull that up. The reason I'm moving that up, that is actually, doesn't even take a vote of the board. It is simply, I want it recorded in the minutes. And this is a let's see, okay. This is a, an application for voluntary merger by Commerce Properties LLC. It is for the property on Winter Street, tax map lot 17-5-8, and the unnumbered lot at the rear of it that was purchased from the town recently by Commerce Properties. He is merging that into one lot and then will be coming eventually to us with a site plan for some additions on the lot. So I will be signing that as the chair of the board, that's all it takes. Okay, no, I will, I stand corrected. On the form, it does say merger of this foregoing lots or parcels was approved by the Ashland Planning Board pursuant to RSA 674:39.
Okay.
So I will accept a motion.
Make the motion to accept the merger of parcels. What are they? 705008?
Yes. And an unnumbered piece behind it. And a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, Andy? And all, and roll call vote, Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Paula Hancock?
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
And Mardean Badger, aye. Okay, and that will get, just simply recorded in the minutes. I will sign the form and that will be forwarded to the appropriate party. Okay. And I do see one other person I'm going to let in. The phone number, okay. Okay. I just let in a person with a phone number of 978-866-8784. Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, this is Christopher Bell with Allphase Contracting Solutions with Energy North, Joe Green.
Okay, all right, thank you. Your name again was Chris Bell?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda deals with Mr. Farnham based on a notice of decision that we made on March 24th. In just a moment, I will share the screen for that. Okay, we do need to pursue the next step. On, just in summary, on March 24th, the Ashland Planning Board granted conditional approval for Farnham's towing and recovery to operate a towing business only at Six Mill Street. And there were conditions precedent and conditions subsequent. It was approved for towing only and all parts and activities related to any motor vehicle salvage or automotive recycling were to be, were to cease and be removed immediately. One of the, there were two other items that were required. The Mr. Farnham needed to submit a plan to the planning board and the building inspector outlining containment and remediation process for spillage of hazardous substances. He was also required to submit a plan with the approval of the fire chief and the building inspector to address safety issues cited in the recent inspection report by the Department of Fire Safety. We also, in that notice of decision, indicated that an inspection by the code enforcement officer shall be conducted in 30 days of this decision, which puts it right about today. So at this point, we need to basically direct the building inspector, inspector to conduct that inspection and provide the planning board and the select board with a written report on his findings as indicated in the notice of decision.
We haven't received any plan, have we?
We have received nothing that I know of. Nothing has come in. Susan, have you seen anything come in at all?
No, and I did send the copy of this agenda to Mr. Farnham. So if he wanted to join the meeting, he was notified or reminded that it was going to be discussed this evening.
Yes.
But so far, nothing has come in either paperwork or electronically.
Right, okay. And you have also been in touch with Scott, the building inspector also? And he has indicated nothing has come in?
I CC him on everything, every communication regarding this case.
Okay, okay. So at this point, I will accept a motion to basically instruct the building inspector to conduct the inspection, to arrange a time with Mr. Farnham to do that inspection and to, based on the notice of decision, all the requirements in the notice of decision, and communicate that in writing to the planning board and to the select board.
So moved.
A second? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion.
I just have one point to make.
Yes.
And that is the actual property owner, Squam River Hydro LLC has also been notified, certified mail of all, all of this as well. So at some point, especially with the safety code concerns, it is up to the property owner. So also, if we notify the building inspector and Mr. Farnham, we will also CC the, the property owner.
Yes, okay.
I agree.
Yes, so we'll add that to the motions, to the notification. Will go out to the property owner also. Okay. Any questions for clarification? Andy, I understand you're coming in partway through this process. So if you've got any questions, I understand.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself on this one.
Okay, okay. And one other note, depending on the findings of the building inspector's inspection, then a determination will be made as to whether allow this business to go forward as a towing business only or whether there will be a seasoned assist order issued. And I believe the seasoned assist orders would have to come from the select board. That's why I think this report needs to go to them also.
Yep, that's a good point.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Paula Hancock?
Aye.
Mardean Badger, aye. And Andy? Are you abstaining?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, oh, right. Okay, motion passes. Okay. And go on to okay. Okay, Mr. Green? And Mr. Bell? This, okay, let me, if I could explain just, for just a moment. I'm going to put some things ready to put up for you. Yeah. Put up just that first. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Green.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the planning board. We have a proposal here to basically utilize the site in the manner of which we purchased it a couple of years ago. And really, this food service operation to the left of the site has been, you know, vacant for a while. And we have partnered with a very, very strong and very high quality pizza shop called Sal's Pizza, and they're out of the north end of Boston. And they've allowed us to be a franchise operator. And Mr. Bell is here tonight, contractor, in case there's any questions as to how we would like to proceed. But we feel that this is going to offer a very, very nice offering to the, the public as well as all of the town, people in the town. And again, it's, it's a very high quality pizza, and we thought it was something that we could offer to the town in this particular area. Tonight, we wanted to just take a look at what we would need to proceed. And I had felt, I felt that, by the way, just, I know Susan's on the, on the call, but I wanted to
Yes.
thank her in front of all of you. She's been super helpful guiding me through this. Ms. MacLeod has been really, really a gift to me, at least. So I appreciate all the work she's done on this so far. And I know there's a lot more to go, but we just wanted to, again, put this out in front of you and see if there was any issues. Really, the box in the back, Madam Chair, is really all we're looking to change. And it's, all, all it is really is a bump out. It's actually within, it's actually within the, the bump out of the sidewalk in the property. There's a sidewalk. This used to be, I guess, before I purchased it, a drive-through. So there's a bump out further down to the right, which you, which you don't detect here. So this is well within that area. And this can be, as I said in the waiver, site plan review waiver application, I said that this could be really modular or it could be a stick build if it's something that you guys would rather, would prefer. But we obviously are trying to look to get this accomplished soon. So that's the reason why I wanted to at least talk with you guys, at least you, you guys tonight.
Can I give just a brief explanation of, for orientation for those who are watching? This is, the image on the right-hand side is the mobile station.
Correct.
Right here. The shaded part is the, is a section, is basically the little retail store that you're not dealing with tonight. The left hand and in, in white, the non-shaded area used, or has been several food service places over the years, been variety. In this larger image on the left, the part in the heavy outline is the new area that's being added. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. This is where
I've proposed.
Right. Right, to be added. This is a back entrance there, and you've got storage and walk-in refrigerator.
Yeah, and so the thought process was to do this so that it's, it's, it's not going to be an issue for, for you in the planning board to try to make sure it's within the framework of, of the building and where, you know, the, all the, I guess, the foundation part. And also, we wanted to say, if, if we needed to have it, you know, more of a modular piece, we could do that too. Whatever you guys really thought would be best for the community. But we really wanted to just get more refrigeration for the pizza business.
Right. And there's a small proposed change inside of shortening one wall so that you have a wraparound counter. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's the only, the only visible to the, to the customer.
Correct. This, this used to be a restaurant, as you said earlier, and it's just been sitting there as Franklin eyesore. And we really want to do something with the space that we thought could help the community, so.
Right. I, I did, I'm going to take this off for just a moment. Let's see. I do have one, one image that I took today. This is the back of the building as it is now. And what you're, I think what you're planning to do is that back entryway is going to be in this area. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's a really a bump out that shows on the, on the, the drawing.
Yeah.
And if you look at where this unit that, that shows the, where the oil tank is.
Yes.
Really, it's just going to go in that little, that little space, so that
The refrigeration area is going to go between those two things.
Yeah.
And it will come out a little bit further than the oil tank, I believe.
I, Chris, what, what are your thoughts? It shouldn't come out past that. I know there's a bump out further to the left, if you, past the, the oil tank.
Let me just come back over to this.
That's why
Yeah, it looks
Yes.
We're possibly sticking out, you know, roughly two feet from that oil tank bump out. The units itself, as far as if we kept them mobile units, they are eight by eight units that are tied together, so a total of eight by 16. But the eight feet being the short end would only stick out past that existing oil bump out about two feet. We would keep it as tight and as cr- the existing building as possible.
I just, I just, I wish I had, I apologize for not having the picture. But when you go around to the, the building, what happens is a bump out that, that is curbing and there's grass with, with curbing. And that comes out, I mean, Chris, what would you say, probably, I don't know, maybe 15, 10 feet, maybe?
Yeah, probably somewhere in that area.
Thank, let's see if I can.
Because, you know, it's, obviously, we always think about, all right, well, when somebody's driving around the building, you know, we don't want them to be, you know, right in front of, yeah, so to the left of that, right, to the left of that area where we have the oil tank. You would go further down to the left, you could probably see how it's angling out. It bumps out quite a bit.
Yes.
So nobody could, nobody would be able to drive in that area. I mean, obviously, we'd fix the curbing, but it wouldn't come out more than two feet anyway. Which is right on the grass, really. See how it's, it's, the, the building is actually sitting there, it's probably going to come out to the curbing.
Yep, I do have one other, let's see if I've got it wrong. One other image that showed the okay. This shows driving through.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
So, and this is on, on the left-hand side.
Right, yes, it does, yes.
But you see where the other curb comes out? So it's like, it's going to be, that, that curb there lines up with the other curb that's, we can't see.
Okay, back at, back at this end.
Right.
Right, okay. Okay.
In the, in the plans as well, they call for some, some barrier posts that would be put up to protect everything as well.
Okay, okay. I did, you later sent let's see. If I can. Okay.
I guess we all got used to using Zoom, huh? You're really
It's tricky, but on this one, I think you should mark, on this one, you mark some safety bollards around the area.
Correct.
Yes, to protect some of the area.
Yeah, and that's basically taking a line from, like I said, the, the grass of the bump outs where it is now, and just making the lines so that we're, we're just utilizing that space in a different, different manner.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Questions from anybody?
So there's no, there won't be any takeout, I mean, drive-through?
Right, no, no drive-through, no. We, we had heard from the neighborhood that that was kind of a nuisance. And we, again, we, we frankly can, you know, in, in this type of business, do a pizza takeout. And, but we just didn't, because the community, we heard, didn't like that before. We weren't, we weren't going to ask for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, you own, your company owns the property and the mobile station. Will you be, who's going to be running the the pizza enterprise?
Well, we have a franchise representative, his name is Paul. And he is the person that's in charge of the day-to-day, the director of operations. So basically, it's a person to be named later, as far as a site manager. But he will be food service certified, and the oversight will be between myself and Paul Hopkins as the supervisor.
Okay, okay.
And this is, this will be our second, third location, actually. We have another one that's going up pretty soon, hopefully, and this will be our, either second or third, depending on what happens tonight.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions about the layout?
No, it looks like it's a good use of the space. It has been empty for quite a while.
Yes, it has, it has. And we do have one question. And let me find one other item here. Okay.
Yeah, I hope I filled out that waiver form correctly.
Okay, that, and that's the next question that we, as a planning board, have to decide as to whether we do it as a waiver of a full site plan review or do we require a full site plan review? Pros and cons?
I wouldn't think we would, because it has been at least three other food service entities there, and they really aren't expanding except for storage, and that's towards the back, away from the public view.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Is it going to be, are you going to have a dividing wall between the food service area and the, the little mini store?
Yeah, there is, and as Madam Chair alluded to earlier, there's a little bit of a wall that's there now. What we want to try to do is open that up a little bit so that, you know, it'd be, people could view it when they walk in the store, that they'd be able to view it. But yeah, that whole, that whole length of the wall stays. So there's definitely a separation.
Okay.
This, okay, so the wall, there's a wall here that would stay.
That stays, yep.
And then this is going to be counter, correct?
Yeah, there's a wall there right now, and it's, it's a brick wall. So there'll be, part of the wall will actually stay, so it'll be like, because they're, one of their motifs is, is brick. So we want to, and that's, that's, that's the old brick that's there, and we want to keep it. And so we're just going to make it look like, kind of like an alcove, so you could see in there. Really like, kind of, north end, north end looking, you know what I mean? Like the north end brick, it's going to look really sharp.
Okay.
We just want, we want to open up a, a small window to allow customers from the gas station to be able to view in and see what's going on and, and see the worker and smell the pizza and, and all that stuff, you know?
But it won't be
We want, we're not known for what's going on in there. We don't want to hide it from anybody.
Okay, okay.
But not, not a walkthrough from one spot to the other like, like it was.
Well, this, this, this front part, will that
Walk through, yes.
Yeah.
We, we're not changing the walkthrough that's there right now that's on the screen yet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's this thing, we're not changing it, no.
This will be open through here, okay.
Because we own both the convenience store and we own this, we want to own this, the Sal's franchise.
Okay.
So, and the good part about that is the, the general manager that's there right now, she'd oversee everything. So, you know, we've had, we've had quite a bit of luck with her, Jenny is her name. And she has a lot of food service experience as well.
Okay. What kind of hours are you going to do? I know it's roughly.
Yeah, 10 to 7, 10 to 8. And if, you know, we, if we wanted to go a little bit later than that, I mean, we've, we've been able to sometimes go as far as, you know, nine or 10, if the, if the town would allow us to. Pizza people get hungry a little bit later. But if you said to me, if you said to me, I don't want you to go later than eight or nine, and without coming back to me, then, then I would have to do that.
Okay, okay. Okay.
We really want to, we really want to be part of, you know, obviously, a good, good neighbor and good part of the community. And we don't want to do anything that will, that would hurt the community at all, so.
Okay. Andy or Paula, any comments or?
Yeah, what, what are the hours of your store now?
The hours of the store, we, we open at 5:00 AM and we close at 11:00. And we, on Sundays, we are at 6:00, 6:00 to 10:00. Thank you. Yep.
Mardean, I have a question.
Yes, Susan.
Again, with food service, is there going to be a dumpster or something in the, a trash container of some sort that would, by site plan regulations have to be nicely hidden from, from you?
Thank you, yeah, there, there is right now that, in fact, there is, we kept the two dumpsters because that's what they had there when they had the food service. They had already added a second dumpster, so we left it like that. And so we, we, we still have that enclosure and nothing's changed at all with that. We, we didn't, we didn't reduce anything.
Okay. Okay. And that will continue to be shielded?
Yes, that's all enclosed, yes.
Yes. Okay. If my, my suggestion, I know this is our first time hearing of this. We can he has filled out the application for waiver of a site plan review. We can, if we want to go through that whole process tonight and accept it and approve it, or since we do have a meeting next Wednesday also, is our Or since we do have a meeting next Wednesday also, is our first meeting of the month. Uh, the other possibility would be. To use this tonight as the informal. Uh, description, discussion, consultation, and then process, if we decide to go for the waiver. Then process that at our uh, next meeting on next Wednesday. Um, what's the feeling of the board?
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, me too, um, we're just, I would like them to uh, explain, you know, be the difference between the stick build or the modular. How, how that, how that's gonna be attached to the building if it's modular.
Okay, when, we just need more, I think we need more information. Than, than we have um, tonight. And I think if they come back with a slightly more detailed explanation to answer some of the questions Kathleen has. And any that we might have between now and next week. I think with a clearer picture, we could make a more um. Um. The, we could make a better decision, I think, with more information.
I, I think whatever questions we have, we have, um, if you've got any other questions now. Uh, Kathleen, you asked about the stick built, uh, when you were describing, um, Mr. Green, when you were describing stick built, were you referring to this? To the entry, the back entryway, or are you referring to the refrigeration area?
Yes, and I, and please, this is with all due respect, I, whatever you guys decide, hundred percent I'll agree with, and I'll stop talking, and I'll shut up and go. But I wanna let you know that uh, uh, I wanna let you know that I, we were trying to get in the, the, the meeting at the beginning of the month, but what ended up happening was, I guess you guys had a really long meeting, so.
But, yes, we did.
Yeah, so this, this is, this has been delayed, I'm not trying to rush you at all, and this has been delayed over four weeks already. I know, what, what's one more week, I don't, I don't mind, if that's gonna make you guys more comfortable, whatever I have to do, like I said, I wanted to preface that. But we have the contractor here today, and he can explain everything. And make sure that you guys are comfortable before making a decision, we have all the information. Um, so I could turn it over to Chris, Chris, if you could explain the differences so that they can, you know, at least ponder upon. Uh, with the, what, what the uh, positives and negatives would be.
Um, stick building means framing with two by fours and plywood siding and matching siding with the existing building. So we could, we could potentially. Build a structure, a full structure off the back of the building and put the storage and the refrigeration. Inside that structure. In doing so, we would have to expand that structure. A couple feet in order to give us room for the refrigeration and storage room, because then that would have to sit inside the structure.
Chris, with that, that would still not, that would still not go up beyond the bump out though, right?
It, it would, it would add framing to it, so you're talking, you know, another, call it seven or eight inches. Um, on that side and seven, eight or it's on the other side, so, you know.
Okay, yeah.
You'd be up to a couple feet per se, give or take.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, Chris, I was just saying, uh, as far as that visual, when she showed us the picture of it before, you know, the actual picture she took today. It's not gonna go anywhere near pat, close to the bollards.
Un- unfortunately, and I'm sorry, but I'm just on the phone and I don't have a visual, I can't see.
Okay, right.
I have the plans in front of me, I can't see that visual.
Okay, no problem.
Right, okay, when you, you were talking about, uh, Mr. Green, when you were talking about the bump out, you were referring to the, to the curbing.
Right.
Is that correct?
The curbing, right, right.
Right, okay.
Correct. Okay, if it were not.
Will still be within.
Yep, okay. If it were not. Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go, you go ahead.
I was just gonna say, more of a visual thing, I guess, you know, and to save space, if we were to just keep them mobilized. Meaning just place the refrigeration and the storage unit there. Uh, exposed to the weather and everything, because they are weatherproof and tight and all that stuff, versus building an entire structure around it that matches the building. If, if that makes sense.
Oh. What would it look like if it, if you did not have the stick built structure around it, what would it look like?
It would look like a Dunkin' Donuts has on the back of their buildings.
It would look like, like next door, there is a um, there's a Dunkin' Donuts and. Most Dunkin' Donutses have a square structure, which is a refrigeration room off the, uh, they're silver, and they're off the back of their stores.
Okay, okay.
That's why I wanted to say, you know, look, what, if you guys don't like that, you know, and some, some communities say, you know what, no, no. Uh, we, we wanna be able to do what's right for you, and we, that's why the option was written in there.
Yeah, it, now that you mentioned Dunkin' Donuts, I would like to take a drive behind it, because I've never driven behind. Never, I've never used the takeout window there, the drive through window, uh, so I would like to. Have a visual of the back of both of these buildings and um. And then I can re- respond next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, the.
I don't know, maybe I'm the only person in Ashland that's never. Used the drive through at Dunkin' Donuts, I haven't been behind there.
It, it's, yeah, don't, uh, don't be confused with the drive through itself, because it doesn't. It, it, it has nothing to really do with the drive through, it's more or less a storage box that's silver on the back of their buildings.
And now I'll be focusing my attention on that, I, I, if, I do recall that there was issue at Dunkin' Donuts, I believe at one time. About the trash and um, it caused some issues with the neighbors it blowing around, and I think even um. Animals were getting into it, so we have to make sure that the um. Pizza's very attractive to multiple animals, that uh, all, all refuse is secure. And a, a secure dumpster and enclosed, probably with some sort of uh. Fencing and um, perhaps even locked.
Yeah, they do, they do, and I, when I drove back there this afternoon, it is fenced in, and I did notice the. Opening to that storage area was locked, I noticed there was a padlock on it.
Yeah, see, I haven't driven around the back of that building in a very long time.
Yeah, and I think, and I think, uh, Miss, Miss, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, Chairman, if I could respond to Mr. Wolf?
Sure.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, um, yeah, and I, and I think that's the reason why I was trying to think of, you know, hey, people don't really like sometimes that, that gray one, and we, ours could be, is white, really. Um, and it's just, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't always look um, as appealing, and that's why I said, you know, let's, let's uh, spend a little bit of extra money. If they want us to, and make it look like uh, the rest of the building. Um, so that was the reason why I sa- I said, I mean, you really, um, you wouldn't even notice it, because it's gonna be such a, uh, if it was built in. Uh, but, but I think, I think uh, Ma- Madam Chairman said it right, it's, it is in the back, like you said, so not many people are gonna see a lot of it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, uh, the store, the. Refuge area, the trash area is, and that's what I was just mentioning, is fenced in and locked. Uh, the, there, more people do drive around the back of this building. Um. When they're, if they've gone to, just gone into the store at the end, or they're, they're using the car wash next to it. I think a fair number of people may drive around the back of the building, so that may be, so. Making it look more like the building itself. With that stick built idea, maybe, I think, uh, it would be my preference.
Yep, so if you said the only way we would, uh, you would want us to do the waiver is by doing that, we'll do it, no problem, and it'll look just like the rest of the building, so whatever you guys want us to do. Thank you.
Is it possible? To paint that box the color of your building instead of building a, a false wall, for lack of a better word?
Chris, that's for you.
Anything is possible, but the idea would be to try and make it um, more. More uh, or less maintenance, uh, and over time, given, given the location of being up in Ashland, New Hampshire with. Your four different seasons and everything else, you know, it's subject to, to peeling uh, paint and all that stuff, so. The, the better option at that point would be, there be leaving it white or framing it around it and making it the siding. Uh, match the rest of the building.
That, that's the, uh, that's the contractor, help, trying to help me out, but if you guys want me to paint it, we'll paint it.
No, I'm just trying to find a, a, a less expensive way out for you.
Thank you.
Middle way, yeah.
Very kind, thank you.
Um.
Uh, like I said, I'd like to just drive around the, you know, the building, and um, so I have a visual in my head, and. I will be ready with my decision at our next meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, is that the general consensus of people? To finalize the waiver of the site plan review. Uh, on Wednesday, with any conditions that we have with it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board with that, that gives me a chance to get down there and, and look at it, this is the first. First go around with this, I haven't seen this paperwork before.
Yeah, I, a couple, a couple things that I um, thought of. If we, if we go with, and I, I think it would be a good idea to go with the waiver of the site plan review. As the additional. The addition at the back of the building is. Minimal, it's not impacting, uh, it's not impacting the driving portion of that back access road. Uh, it, the use of that area is consistent with what has been in that section of the building all along. Um, so I'm, I'm comfortable with going with the waiver of the site plan review. Uh, shortening, shortening the process, uh, we may have, maybe a few conditions, uh, such as. Um, as we've been talking, whether stick builder or the modular piece, uh, that decision next week. Uh, the, the one thing that uh, I would strongly suggest, and I think it may be part of the, the um. Vote next week, obviously, after, we would need an as-built revised site plan. When you, when you put it all, when you finish it up, yeah. So that we have that on file, shows exactly what is there.
Correct, no problem, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I have another.
Yes, Susan. Yes.
Signage, um, there's that long, existing one that is right there on the corner where they actually flipped the old one that used to say, eat, eat here and get gas. Um, are you going to use that same sign? Um.
It, we, because we have um, the square footage there, or uh, what we would do is we'd be. Uh, u- utilizing that area, um, because I know that we still have to get approval, but uh, we would have to get a waiver if we wanted to get anything um, bigger, so. Uh, we would stay within those parameters.
Okay, yeah, and obviously, uh. All appropriate building permits.
Right.
Uh, would be required, um. And that, and as soon as we approve this, the approval is copied to the building inspector so that he knows what is happening. And we will give you the contact name for him also, um, the sign requirements are in our zoning ordinance, and uh. So that if you were to make any changes, make any. Uh, alterate, altered sign plans. Um.
Ma- ma- Madam, um, Chair, Chairman, may I ask you one more question, so?
Sure.
So we, it sounds like we, we have two, two, two things, I just wanna make sure I'm clear, we have one about the approval of, of, of us going forward with the project. And then we also have uh, the application of waiver of site plan, is that the site plan is something we can do tonight, or is it also gonna be moved to?
The application, I think the sense of the board is. The application for waiver of site plan review is what we will. Approve process at the next meeting, next Wednesday.
Thank you, thank you for clearing.
That is, then that gives you permission to go ahead, that is uh, copied, as I said, to the building inspector. So he knows what's happening, so he'll be ready to uh, work with you on building permits. So that becomes. That becomes the approval for, for the project.
Okay, but as far as the uh, the, the, everybody sound like they like the idea, I mean, is, you guys think it's a good idea, I mean, it's. It sounds, sound good so far?
Yes.
Thank you so much, great, awesome.
The only thing I'd like to bring to your attention is, um, there is a sidewalk reconstruction. Of, partnering with DOT that is beginning.
End of the month?
Um.
Probably within a week.
Couple of weeks, Andy, has there been a firm date for the, the start?
Yeah, I believe the firm date was Monday, last Monday.
Oh, okay, so there will be some disruption along the frontage of the, of the mobile, from, it starts. At the corner of West Street where that. Collection area is the big, like, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
So it starts there, and it'll be going right, and it'll be going in front of the mobile station all the way down through uh, Main Street. Almost to uh, to the corner of where the Sure Fine Market is. So that sidewalk will be dug up and reconstructed, reconstructed, so. Um, I don't know how that affects the aprons um, to the business, um. I no longer have the, the plans in front of me, um, but. So you can plan accordingly, if you, you know, if you thought you were gonna start, you know. Next Friday, and you bring all your stuff in and find out, everything's torn up, it might.
They, they will be.
Their plans, yeah.
Thank you for that, thank you. And you know how long that project lasts?
I think about eight weeks, it's gonna be about two months, there's, they're planning on being done before the uh, Fourth of July weekend.
But, but it's, it's that end, it, it's the West Street end, I believe, they're working from West Street down.
Oh, great.
And the sidewalk, the newly constructed sidewalk will be on your side of the street.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yes, it might be, it might make it more attractive for uh, people to walk there, to uh.
Oh, wonderful.
Access, access the business.
Thank you for that, I, I did hear, uh, as again, Susan uh, asked if I had heard anything, and they didn't say anything to us yet, so thank you very much, I'm glad that we moved.
Okay, there should have been some contact, contact with you, because uh, part of that process had to do with easements for their construction.
So could, you know, it could be at the uh, the attorney at the corporate office, but I hadn't heard about it yet, so I'm so glad that, I appreciate that information.
Yeah, and there may be some one-way traffic off and on for a while, yeah. If I can find any more information, um, I can forward some con- uh, contact to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, so I think it's agreed that we will, at our next meeting. We will process and approve the waiver of the site plan review, uh, with a couple of the conditions.
Conditions.
Uh, one, one decision will be whether the stick built versus the modular. Unit.
Thank you so much of your time this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and we will send out the uh, meeting information for next. On, on Monday, we will send out the meeting information for the Wednesday meeting.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. That. Okay, just a moment here. Next up. Is. John, and I'm, I may. How do you pronounce your last name?
It's Quiet Kowski.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Little, little easier than it looks.
Okay, okay, John Quiet Kowski of. Of High Life Building Company, Inc., you are here to. Explain what you are interested in doing and where.
Yeah, I, I, uh, well, it's been a little time now, but I, I recently purchased uh, the corner of Winter and Main Street.
Okay.
Downtown Ashland, um, I bought that uh, with the intention, it'd be a good opportunity for me and a good opportunity for the town. Um, seeing that, that lot's been vacant for many, many years now. Um, and a new building there uh, would definitely add visual appeal to the area and um. Possibly, depending on what I end up finding. Possibly, depending on what I end up, finally end up doing, uh, draw, you know, more business to the downtown area. Or um, you know, a couple to three um, new um. Residences to that area, which would in turn, um, you know, have people spend their money in the area. My intention for the, for uh, today is just to discuss, um. You know, this preliminary drawing and uh, the setbacks and any potential. Conflicts that you guys would see, um, me needing uh, to deal with the zoning board. I, I personally don't see any issues, uh, but maybe you guys would see any issues, uh, that would arise. And having uh, me to deal with variances and, and anything like that. You can see from, from the plan that um, there's a proposed easement. Uh, it is written in the deed that the neighbor to the uh. To the northwest of my property, Elizabeth Peoples. It, it is in my deed and her deed that she has a easement through my property. Which she intends to use, uh, you would have to talk to her about how she intends to use it. But it was brought to my attention by her that she is um, having some thoughts about using that easement. And I don't know if she is intending to use it, or if she's trying to bring this up. To make it more attractive for her sale, I noticed uh, her building is for sale now. But right now, it is still in discussion between me and her of the width of that easement. It, it is not written in the deed how, why that easement should be, uh, but she does. Like to have vehicle access through there, I'm, I'm not too sure how the neighbor to the south. Mister uh, Chason would agree to that, but she does have that. That right to that easement in, in the deed. What I would like to discuss is basically the setbacks on every side of that pro- property. According to the, the zoning ordinance, uh, the, the setback for new construction on, on the. On the street side is thirty-five feet, but there's also a clause in there that. In the commercial zone, it can be an average of the adjacent uh, building setbacks. The Elizabeth Peoples ha- uh, building is a setback of thirty-three feet on the Main Street side. So I, I intend to propose uh, my building be setback the, the same amount. From the center line of the road on Main Street, so it would be in line with her building on the Main Street side. And on the Winter Street side, I would propose a construction setback. Um, similar to Mister Chason's house. On the. On the side of my property that abuts, uh, Miss Peoples. I don't have an issue with the fifteen-foot setback there that's required. If that's gonna avoid getting a, a variance from the zoning board, I'm okay with getting the, the fifteen-foot setback there. On, on my property line that abuts Mister uh, Caseon's property or Chason's property. Um, there is. It is referred to in the zoning ordinance that, um, there could be a conforming setback if agreed to. By the zoning board, I think it's the zoning board or the planning board, it may be the planning board, can agree to a, a. A conforming setback similar to the adjacent property. So if you can see by the picture, uh, this, Mister uh, Chason's house. Is a matter of, you know. A few feet from my property line there. Um, it, it's skewed at an angle, so on the back of his house, it's a lot closer to my property line than it is to the. To the front of his, from the front of his house. My proposal is to. Follow that same setback from his house to my property line. From Miss Peoples easement, whatever it, with it. Finally, it ends up being, uh, to have a setback similar. Of, in, in size. From uh, Miss Peoples easement line to my, my building, um, line, so essentially. It would be around. Twelve feet from my property line to my, to the backside of my building there on that. On that southern line is what, is what I'm proposing, so. If Miss Peoples did attempt to drive a vehicle down that alley. Uh, there would be room to push a snowbank or something off to the side for her to do that. She intends to use that for vehicle access. So basically, that's. Where I'm at today, um, obviously, this plan is, is still in the works, so I don't have a, a building structure designed. Yet, um, when the, when the survey is finalized, then I can proceed with. Uh, the building design. For you guys to um, to review. And I'm assuming because it's in the commercial zone, you would have to review the building itself, the design of the building itself. Um, before I um, submit it to the planning or the building department, is that correct?
Uh, yes, couple of things, uh, the site plan will have to be. Approved before building permits are issued, okay, the final site plan has to be, has to be approved. A couple, a couple of other things, um, obviously note that what. The final resolution of the easement is. Uh, you realize that it's a civil matter between you and the other property owner. That does not come to us for approval of the easement. Once you two parties agree on what that easement is, it obviously then would be noted on the site plan.
Correct.
The other, a couple of other small things, uh, again, um, before you do a site plan. You've, this, this is actually two small piece, two small individual properties. So um, it's, at some point, you're going to have to merge those two properties. And there is an official process for that.
Well, at this point, that, that I haven't decided on doing yet.
Right, when it's, when it's, when it's appropriate, if you intend to. Build across those two pieces of property, then you would merge it. If you're going to put two, if you're going to put an individual building on each of the two properties and keep them separate. Then you're going to be dealing with even more setback issues.
Cor- cor- correct, yeah, if they're two individual properties, yes.
Now. Can. Could you review for us again? It got a little, little bit complicated there, what, um. What are you proposing? Let's take one side at a time.
Sure.
What are you proposing? For the, first of all, this, these properties are, their address in the property list. Is as Main Street, so I think from that point, you would assume then that. This, the sides of the two properties facing Main Street will be the fronts of the properties. Our setbacks are labeled as front, side, and rear. Okay, so if this, the front.
Except.
Yeah. What, how do we do that, Susan?
Well, for, for land and space requirements, uh, in section, uh, two-point-three-A. It says, there shall be a minimum distance of thirty-five feet between the edge of any public right-of-way and any building. So if it was on a corner, then he has two rights of way to consider. So which, and which one you use as your access for a driveway. If it's Main Street, you have to deal with the state, and if it's Winter Street, then it's a, a town road, so.
Okay.
Cor- correct, and thank you for bringing that up, um. The thirty-five feet. Is, now, my understanding is, is the thirty-five feet is from the center line of the road, is that not the case?
Between the edge of any public right-of-way and any building. Section two-point-three-A in the zoning ordinance.
Right-of-way, right-of-way generally in and of itself is fifty feet from the center line, so.
And that's where you're going to have to, particularly on Main Street, which is Route Three, which is a state road. You're going to have to deal with DOT on that.
Right, um, I, I fully, I fully intend to have the parking area coming off the Winter Street area.
Okay.
Because, just because, for simplicity reasons and um, traffic reasons. Uh, it, it'd be a lot less dangerous for, um, you know, the re- residents living there. Um, to park their vehicles and backing out and all that kind of stuff or whatever. My, my questions tonight are, are about the setbacks, um, in the zoning ordinance, uh, two-point-three. E. The, there's a clause that says it can be an average of the, the adjacent buildings existing setbacks. Being, there's two adjacent buildings there. The setbacks of those buildings can be adopted to my property, correct?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It depends on what you're going to build, because that clause, clause specifically says, "Commercial Buildings." If you're going to put a residence in there, it might not apply in the same way.
Yeah.
The, the commercial clause was, again, because downtown to develop it, develop um, commercial enterprises. They didn't have to have the setbacks that seemed to have been set for residential use and, um. So what you want to build there also plays into this.
Yeah, I do intend to do some kind of commercial, uh, either office space or. A um. Light um. Restaurant usage, like a coffee shop or something like that, of that nature, um, over, under residential. So like a mixed-use kind of thing, where uh, there would be. Uh, you know, a condo units above whatever's on the Main Street level.
Okay. Um.
Um, can we have this? Can we have this uh, schematic sent to us? This is. Uh, this is the first I've seen of it.
This, this is a preliminary survey, um, you're, you're welcome to have, uh.
Did you, did you forward it to, um?
Susan has, Susan has the PDF, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I.
Came in rather late, it was forwarded, I think this, this, this morning. Or late, yeah, or late last night, because.
Alright.
And it did.
Until.
Yeah, and it did, I had difficulties getting it to open.
Okay, that's what it is, I couldn't, I couldn't open it.
So, so I did, uh, my husband played with it, and we got it open, and I got this. What? One thing to keep in mind, Mister Quiet, Quiet Kowski, is that. If you are going to do anything other than the required setbacks. You will need to go to the zoning board. For variance. And at that time, you're going to have to show what you want for setbacks on each side. And give an idea of, and justify it. By whatever parts of the zoning ordinance you want to use to justify it. We, as the planning board, cannot make that decision to vary the setbacks.
I, I, I am aware of, of that, yes.
Okay.
I'm aware of that, if that, uh, comes to that point where it's violating setbacks, but it. There is that clause, uh, E in section two-point-three, that, that gives the planning board the power to. To allow, um. Setbacks of, similar to the adjacent buildings.
Uh, it ends with zoning board of adjustment, if we read the entire E. Commercial building need not be setback more than the average of the front setback of commercial buildings on the sides to. On the lots to either side. If a vacant lot exists on one side, the minimum front setback shall be required. The minimum side and rear setbacks may be reduced to conform with the side and rear setbacks of structures on adjoining properties. At the discretion of the zoning board of adjustment.
Adjustment.
Okay, so.
That's where you're just, that's where your, your request will have to go for any changes and setbacks.
And would I have to use, because Miss Peoples' property is not a commercial property, um, at this point, I, I.
It's, uh, okay, this is the commercial zone.
Okay.
You are in the commercial zone, keep that in mind also.
Yes, um, but to, uh, refer back to what Susan said, um, she said, if it's a residential property. It doesn't count in that clause, Miss Peoples' property not being commercially used. It's maybe in the commercial zone, but it's not commercially used, um, so I do, so would. Would I not be able to go by her setback? Would I have to go to the other side? Uh, to the, where the Common Man, uh, store. Is, and use their setback?
No.
Average? I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not sure who's, who's set, setback I, I would use to, to you, to. To average from. You know?
Okay, well, again, it, it gets, it gets murky in a, in a, a mixed-use zone. But the, the, the next one down, well. The Peoples' building at one time was more or less commercial use, because it was a bed and breakfast, and as a multi-family, if she has. Apartments in it, it is a, a commercial use. If she lives there all by herself, now it is residential, but, but it has in its past also had commercial use on Main Street.
Now, how? I'm sorry, go ahead.
It probably more recently and predominantly has been commercial use.
I mean, that, okay, and I, then maybe her intention for the easement to return it to commercial use, but you'd have to talk to her about that.
That's, and that, as I said, the issue with the easement is between the two property owners. That is not something that the planning board gets into.
No, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not saying it is, um, but the, the setback to the easement would be the planning board, correct?
No, the setback.
Easements don't, uh, they're all deed, they're all deed-related, and whether it was a right-of-way for an electric department. Or something in the deed for access by an abutting property or something. That's not something that we either consider a right-of-way that needs a setback or, um.
Okay, so.
It's a whole, it's a whole different legal thing that is taken care of through deed process, not, um.
So theoretically, I could build right to her easement if I chose to, if we agreed upon it.
If, if it's agreed upon and spelled out in the deed, then you would know what your buildable boundary is. I mean, we have the same problem with another right-of-way in town that's currently built upon, which now the property owners might. Need to change.
Okay.
But just to clarify, Susan, if, just using some numbers as an example. If that easement is ten feet wide and the setback were fifteen, it's not ten plus fifteen, correct? Ten of that is within the fifteen setback, is that correct?
Basically, still is the property owner with that boundary line, so. The property owner with that boundary line, so his setback is from his boundary line within a budding property.
Right, right.
The easement. Again, if he started building things or putting obstructions in it would again be the civil matter between the the. Easement holder and the property that the easement runs through.
Right.
Okay, the but the to utilize the. The conforming setback to the Mr. Chason's house. That that would go through the zoning board, correct? To to use a similar setback that Mr. Chason's house has to my property line.
Any variation in the setback would have to go to the zoning board, yes.
Okay.
Because again, most of these, most of these buildings were existent prior to zoning ordinance that set these various setbacks. As soon as zoning came in in nineteen eighty-five, all new buildings had to meet those requirements. And if they couldn't, in order. Any town that has a zoning ordinance has to have a zoning board of adjustments for the people who can't fit into the new standards. So. So as a new build, you would have to go to the zoning board if you can't fit the the new standards since nineteen eighty-five, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that. One final question, I guess, would be. The use, you mentioned that an apartment building would be considered. Commercial use. I I would rather not have an apartment building there. There's not enough parking for it and I guess it's not, I don't think it's in the best interest of the town to have a tenement there. But what about a multi-unit sale like individually condoized building? Like a three-unit condo building? Would that be considered commercial use? If there are like three condo units all attached together. But individually saleable.
I feel that would be commercial also.
Okay.
Susan's opinion on that one?
And you have to have the parking.
Yeah, it still has the same parking requirements for every dwelling unit created. You have to have two parking spaces.
Right, so a three-unit building would need six spaces.
And if you did a mixed use where you wanted to have some kind of office or something, there is also within the zoning ordinance a definition of. Defining what possible. Traffic would be associated with various things like a restaurant. They have how many tables equals how many. Parking spaces and and.
Right. One idea I have is to do a parking garage underneath the building. Similar to. I don't know if you've got, if you guys have been through the Guilford. Line with Laconia there, there's a. There's a condo building by the Margate and they have a parking area underneath the building. That I I think would be the. The easiest solution for that property. To have a driveway access on the Winter Street. Side and have a parking area underneath the building itself. For whatever is above it on the Main Street level and above. I think that's the only solution for that property. Short of building a single-family home on that lot. If if you know, there's going to be anything more than a single-family home on that lot, that's. Pretty much what's going to have to happen. Is to have a parking garage underneath the building. But you know, that's yet to be seen until the survey's one hundred percent. I can't even fathom what I'm going to design for that thing. But I want to just, you know. Put a bug in in everyone's ear and and let you guys know that I I do intend to do something with that lot. On a side note, I do plan on cleaning up that lot next month, cutting the brush out. I have someone scheduled to clear out all the thickets there and take down the dead trees. There's one tree that's. Uprooted and leaning towards Mr. Chason's house. I do intend to take that out and clean all that out next month. I believe. The company I hired scheduled on the fourth, but it may be the seventh, I'm not sure. To go in there and and clean out all that brush and just make it more appealing for the time being. And and you know, just get it, get it looking better. Until something's figured out for that property. And I I don't believe I need to get any permits or anything to clear the brush out and clean that up. Is that correct?
I would be, I know there's not a, there's no permit for clearing brush out.
That is full of invasives. There's quite a bit of bittersweet in there. I think there might even be some. Japanese knotweed, so whoever you hire has to follow the best. Management procedures, the BMPs for dealing with invasive species disposal.
And be.
Yeah, none of that, none of that, that vegetation is going to be chipped. It's all going to be dug up and removed. And brought to a. Facility that accepts. Stumps and whatever, kind of kind of feel like that.
As since there is quite a slope, there's quite a. Slope in that lot, please be very careful of the neighbors as far as affecting. Any drainage from that lot into neighboring lots. If anything gets changed there.
Yes, no site, no site work is going to be done at this time. There'll be no digging of the property and. The topsoil is not going to be removed, only only the the vegetations will. The stumps won't be removed at this time, but the the vines and. And and those. Thickets or the. Those kind of species, the roots will be pulled out. Combed out, basically combed out, but the soils will not be removed at this time. And the grasses will stay. There won't be any topsoil or grasses removed, only the. The the thickets and and the trees, you know, that are on that property. I know if you didn't call them trees, they're like super tall weeds. But. That that's on on the plan to happen here, you know, some sometime soon.
Okay.
So for for years, it was always a mystery who owned the sign on the corner there. You're the owner of the sign, huh?
I, well, I don't, I I I didn't know when I bought it. But from seeing the survey, I I think it is sitting on my property, yes. But on the final survey, the sign will be drawn on the final survey, so everyone will know. Who who that sign belongs to. I I did, I was approached by some businesses at the end of Winter Street that wanted to hang signage on that. But I told them I I couldn't say. Here or there until I actually knew I owned it. But if they did want to hang something on there, obviously, they would have to get approval from you. Or would I have to get approval because I own it?
Signage requires sign permits.
By the owner or the person hanging the sign?
One of them.
Yeah.
I would think the person who wants to pay for the sign to be put up would at least need some kind of. Either authorization or recognition that the property owner is aware that they're doing this on your property.
Right.
Yeah.
Always good policy that a property owner is always informed of anything that's happening on their property. You shouldn't have to be paying for whatever individual signs happen to go up on it.
Well, I I was going to. Charge a fee for doing that, but as part of the reconstruction of that property. I do intend to renovate that sign, make it more appealing. So any of the businesses at the end of Winter Street that do want. You know. Visibility, they will they will have a a more appealing place to put visibility for their businesses.
Yeah, well, again, the sign permits are issued by the building inspector, so you know Scott by this time, so.
Yeah. For now, for now, that's I'm I'm going to leave it. I'm not renovating it until, you know, the construction. Or after even the construction. It it'll be. It'll be integrated into the design of the property itself. It'll complement the design of the property itself. Obviously, with the new building there, you know, raggedy old sign kicking around.
Okay, so just as. Just to summarize a few of the things that we've gone over, as far as setbacks. If you are going to make any. Change from what is required, obviously, you need to go to the zoning board. And as far as any interpretation of our ordinance, if you've got questions in the meantime. Please sit down with Susan McLeod to go through exactly what parts of the ordinance are going to apply to. Which setbacks. I would clarify it there before you even go to the zoning board. But any approval on changes of setbacks will have to go to the zoning board. And in and until that is done. You cannot deal with any construction on the site. Because in construction on the site is going to require a site plan. So zoning board first. Then back to planning board when you're ready for site plan. Keep in mind, again, as I mentioned, it is two. Separate lots right now. If your plan is to use that. The two lots together, you're going to have to do a merger. Susan McLeod also has the process on that. Parking, she mentioned two spaces per dwelling unit. Minimum dwelling unit size is seven hundred and fifty square feet. There is a height restriction on buildings in Ashland. It is three stories or forty-five feet. Keep that in mind. Any construction, when you get to that point, requires all of the appropriate building permits. Right on through.
Agreed. Okay, sounds good. Well, I thank everybody for their time. I'm sure everybody wants to get going.
It's Liz. Can I ask a quick question? Okay, thanks. So John, awesome, and it sounds like you're getting your plans together and. I'm trying to also get there to try to help you with the easement in the way of at least figuring it out and. You know, Tony Randall is involved in trying to help me survey my side now, so we. Understand the boundaries, but my question is about trees. So you're going to do the clearing pretty quickly. Just you're like, are you going to take any of those trees? I mean, we haven't decided on that my boundary side. I don't understand, like, like, I don't know, you're probably just clearing out the thicket and everything right now.
Yeah, the thicket and the smaller trees on the property. I'm not taking anything down that's on.
The rock wall?
On the on the property line, yeah.
Okay, that's awesome. So that's that was all I had. That's it. Thanks.
I I that's that's one of the things. I I discovered is the prop, the property line is actually on the other side of those trees, so.
Well, that's that's actually not determined. We're actually, that's what we're trying to figure out right now.
Be very, be very clear on where property lines are before you start working close to either side.
Well, that's why.
It's going to take coordination between between both of you.
So we're we're working on it. I think John's getting his survey fixed and, you know. Completed, there's there's some ambiguity because. Three lot, three plot places on the properties that are the square of his combined properties have been found. And actually, another point has been found in my back, but that the line we're talking about is a little bit. That's a little bit of a mystery and it depends on which angle of the street you're coming in from the for the measurement. So we're going to try to get to the bottom of it with the histories and the deeds and Tony's working on it, Jack McCormick's working on it. And you know, we're we're going to, we're going to come to a conclusion. It'll be a fact, so whatever it is, is a is a fact. But for now, because there's some ambiguity about that wall and the. And the tree line on that wall, the wall's been there like eighty years or ninety years or something. So it's been, it would be a big deal about the change, but. Right now, you won't, you won't try to touch any of those trees that are pretty mature on that line at this time, right?
Yeah, to for to be a little more. Clear for the for the planning board here, maybe we can save the phone pole. Nothing. Nothing to the north of the phone pole, the northwest of the phone pole is going to get cut. I'm not even sure where where a wall is. I don't remember seeing a wall there.
No, there's a rock wall there that's been there for a long, long time. But anyway, bottom line is there's a, there's a line there right behind the phone pole. Is a pretty good-sized mature tree. It's it's got an incredible width. It's got lots of different sort of branches and it's. You know, eventually the electric company might decide that it should come down. But when you and I initially talked, we talked about that that line and it's a buffer between the properties and you said, yeah, 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 that's fine. Because I want a buffer between the properties anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Would have a setback.
I'm going to interrupt at this point and say, some of this is something that you two need to sort out. Between you two outside of the planning board meeting as to what trees you're cutting, what trees you're not.
Here, here.
That's that's all right, but it it's just noted that 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 has, that's an issue that you two have to deal with. Any questions from the rest of the planning board?
We'd need a lot more information before, I wish I do before I make any decision.
Yeah, and actually, any decision, especially dealing with setbacks, is going to go to the zoning board first. Before it ever comes back to us, but please, John, keep in close touch with Susan McLeod. So that whatever process you're in, you understand the regulations and understand what. Regulations need to be abided by. Very important in that process.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, very good.
What do we need to do on the application form?
Nothing tonight because I didn't have it ready.
That's why I asked.
Because it wasn't in my package. It wasn't, and yeah, so I just have to put the final thing together and then we'll look at it. Yeah. For Andy, that's for the. The new excavation regulations. We're working on the application form that has to go with the regulations.
So Ma Dean, did you look at that email I sent you about from Pearlac?
I haven't yet.
Okay, maybe we could touch on it next Wednesday because. Now LRPC has been consulted about, this is concerns a overlay for the PEMI. We are the only town along the corridor that has a PEMI overlay. And there's issues north. Mainly Camden and Thornton. But I'll let Ma Dean read the information. And I think it's worth us discussing it, so we are aware of. What other towns are dealing with.
Yes.
Their concerns.
Yes, okay, so next meeting, we'll finish up. The pizza. At the mobile station, finish that up.
Confused about the modular. I didn't understand.
It's a, it's a whole, it's a whole. Box type unit that's just sets right in place.
I know, I can't.
They would set it right on a concrete slab.
Okay, it's just.
Yeah, it comes, it comes in on a trailer. They put it in place with a fork truck. And it's it's done. It's a finished product.
All right.
It's silver and it's huge.
Okay, that's what I was envisioning, I just.
Which which means in some ways it's not a permanent structure. Which, which means in some ways, it's not a permanent structure.
That's why, yeah.
We can take it away again.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was wondering, why would you do that unless you wanted to haul it away at some point? But.
Well, it's, yeah, but it it's got all of its own insulation in it, it's.
Why wouldn't you just do the framing and have it part of the building? Is it because it's cheaper to have a modular?
Well, it's still, if it's, it's still, that modular is still gonna come in, it's, do we want them to put a wall around it, basically? That's, that's the issue.
Yeah, do we want them to dis- disguise it?
Right, right, that's it.
There's a couple of houses behind them. I could picture them wanting it disguised, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I know there was issues with with Dunkin' Donuts that, uh, there was some unpleasant surprises. When it went in.
Dunkin', the Dunkin' Donuts issue was primarily for their trash.
It dr- yeah, that it was.
That's, that was the main concern there, yeah.
Trash and the lights through the, uh, drive-through going around the building.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, so we ju- we, you know, that basic issue is, do we wanna see the, the metal box or do we want? Siding or something or other around it?
That, that's what I thought, but I was just not sure if I was thinking correctly along those lines.
Yeah. Yeah, and think of if there are any other conditions that we would want to. Uh, put on that, and some of our, so we can do all the standard language, uh, you know. Abide with all appropriate permits and so on, that's gonna be, that would be a given, yeah.
Okey dokey.
Okay, um. That's all I've got tonight.
Okay, well, there was, there was one email with a forwarded from Patsy regarding signs, I guess I can take care of that tomorrow, I don't know if you. Checked it?
Yes, that came in.
Wondering about who she could email about putting up signs in the public areas of Ashland, now it. It requires a few more questions about what she defines as public right of ways.
And what kind of signs.
Park or in front of town hall and what type of signage she's talking about.
Yeah, and I think we still need to. Um. There was a question recently that came to me, it was, um. Oh, the the manufacturer next to the cemetery.
Freidenberg.
Freidenberg, all of a sudden I had a blank, uh, Freidenberg was asking, could they put up, uh, job? Job signs or.
Oh, looking at.
Yes, help wanted signs along the, and they said in, in the question, they were asking primarily about, I think. Towards ninety-three and we said, no. I mean, that's state property, no, now I noticed today, all of a sudden, there are signs along the ballpark. And about employment opportunities at Freidenberg.
But that's.
Again, we're dealing with state right of way, but we're also dealing, I were, I'm seeing more and more signs going up along that stretch.
Yeah, there was one for buying old records and.
And, yes, and now all of a sudden, there are probably three or four of those employment signs along there. Um, so how we're gonna deal with that, I don't know, cuz we're also dealing with state and state probably. Would say, no, you're not supposed to, but they really.
No, you have, you have to file a formal complaint, it takes some, a minimum of thirty days to respond, they send a letter to the, the perpetrator. Who give them thirty days to take them down, maybe they do and then they put them back up again, I've had.
And they really don't have.
One and only person in the state who deals with this issue, so.
Yeah.
Wasn't it the same issue up on Route Three, um, with the.
Yeah, with the realty signs, realty signs, yeah.
At the end of the covered bridge, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it does make the town look untidy to have all those signs plunked along this edge, no.
Especially looking down over the nice ball field, but, yeah, yeah, so I don't know. Okay.
So there's one other thing.
Yes.
Reminder, your May meeting, you, um, you reorganize.
Yes, that's right. So next.
We already, I thought we reorganized.
We did, I think we did.
You, you elect your chair, your co-chair and your secretary.
But I think this last year, we may have been a little late in joining it, so it may seem.
Oh, was that what it was, we weren't early, we were actually late?
We might have been, um.
It wasn't that long ago, and since you only had a choice, there was only three of us.
Yeah, so next, next Wednesday, reorganization, uh, we'll have minutes from tonight. Uh, we'll have, um, finish up the mobile station application, um.
And contact Scott so he can, um, set up.
Yes.
His site, re-up, walk.
Draft a memo confirming what we said in the minutes, yeah.
Are, are you gonna be in tomorrow, Susan?
Uh, yes, I am, okay.
Okay, so any, um, I'm, I'm all set.
Um, did Andy pick up, did you pick up your, your planning board bible?
Yes, he did. Look at that.
Yours, yours is prettier than mine, I gotta hand me down.
I had to take it home to three hole punch it, because there's not a three hole punch in the town office, except for the one you plug in that that jams all the time.
All right.
Well, Mardean.
Stapler.
I I was up there today and I couldn't even find the stapler.
Oh, no, it's, it's in surgery, cuz it it jammed up and I couldn't get it free, so I brought it down and Anne said she would try and she couldn't do it. But she didn't want it to defeat her, but yes, I'm bringing my own stapler in tomorrow too.
Well, I, Mr. Badger couldn't find one in the corner office either, uh. About a month and a half ago, so it seems to be a a shortage of working staplers, I, there were plenty of staples, I was going to believe. But not staple, staplers to put them in.
Right, there's one in the, there's one in the supply cabinet, but somebody put it there cuz it's jammed up.
She took a knife and tried it open.
All right, on that note, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay.